Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Roxanne, do you want to just call the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Marshall? Mrs. McGrattan?
Here.
Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Som?
Here.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
We want to ask this.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there are any residents and property owners who wish to speak. They would need to raise their hand so we could see them or indicate somehow. Hearing none. I will move on to, let's see. We probably don't have any committed commissioner or board reports, but I'll ask in case anybody is out there. They would need to raise their hand. And at this time, I will open it to any comments of town councilors. If you are going to speak, please state your name and raise your hand so Roxanne will call on you. Anybody have anything to say?
Yeah, Mary.
Okay, just information from Los theft, the alleged inter-church emergency fund. And this is just for 2019, does not include anything of this year. They expended seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Most of that went to housing. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary? Any other comments of town councilors? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March twenty-fifth. Moved.
By Councilor Ingalls.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington.
So that was the motion was made by Councilor Ingalls and seconded by Councilor Washington. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall's not here. Mrs. McGrattan? Um, Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
At this time, we'll move on to subcommittee and liaison reports. Admin, anything?
Admin met this evening. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Councilor Ingalls. Admin met this evening. We continue to work on the dog leash ordinance. At this point, we are, I think we're closing in on it. We're going to put together two pieces of information in appendices for the ordinance. One will be areas that are strictly off limits to all animals. We're going to work with the Parks and Rec Director on that. For example, there really are no circumstances where we want dogs to be allowed, for example, on our children's playgrounds. Leashed or not, not, they don't belong there. So we're going to put that in an appendix. We're also working with the Conservation Commission to identify at least one trail where animals can be off-leash if they're under control. And we also need to start gathering information about proper signage. I spoke with the police chief and the ACO, who confirmed that enforcement has been challenging in part because people don't call the police, they get on social media to complain. So if folks are frustrated with a roaming animal, the thing to do is call the animal control officer, not go on Facebook, please and thank you. Also, Admin worked on, excuse me, are there a few things that will be on the agenda later tonight? Yeah. The other thing we did was, you know, just endorse the short-term rental application. It wasn't something the committee needed to vote on, but we did review it together. And we think we have a good product to put out there and start testing. And that's the report from Admin.
Does anybody have any questions for Admin?
I do, this is Councilor Som. Question came up in conversation about, I don't even recall who I was speaking with, but question came up about the short-term rentals. And the topic was people coming from New York or other places to escape areas that they didn't want to be in and using short-term rentals as their escape. Has there been any thought or discussion about that?
Oh, that's interesting. You know, my understanding was that the governor had said no to that. That's a great question. Mayor, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, that was something I can either report on right now or it's part of my mayor's report, up to you.
That's fine, Mayor.
Yeah, I can hold it until my report if you wish.
Sure, yeah, continue your report. Sure, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for Admin? Our finance bill?
This is Councilor Som. The town council finance committee held its regular meeting last Wednesday at 5:00 PM via video conference. Links were provided on the agenda. And since WebEx does not display the phone number of callers, it's not known whether any residents participated. But there were no public comments. We continued to discuss a funding plan for future replacement of the high school's multi-use artificial turf and set up funding lines for replacement. Councilor Ingalls and I both feel that the resolution is ready, but we didn't want to move it forward to the council because it's not date or it's not time sensitive. And we wanted Councilor Malone to be able to weigh in on it as well. So we're going to vote on that, I hope, at our next meeting. We also continued to discuss the balance in the Undesignated Fund, the Middle Age Stabilization Fund, and the Healthcare Fund, and received some good news from the Finance Director about other possible sources of funds to restore the, or partially restore the Undesignated Fund. But so much is changing in the state, federal, and town budget landscape right now. The committee took no action because we think a lot more is going to happen. We're going to have a lot more information as things unfold. The committee is very concerned about increasing healthcare costs, which were reported. Some estimates were reported. And assuming there are probable revenue reductions, given the number of people who have lost income due to the pandemic. So as a result, and also as a result of the governor's executive orders extending the adoption of municipal budget activities up to May fifteenth for thirty days, and suspending the requirement for in-person town meetings and referenda, the Finance Committee took no action on recommendations for the council to set dates for the public hearing, the town meeting, or the town referendum. The governor's order also gave authority to the town council, the town's legislative authority, to adopt the public fiscal 2021 budget. And the committee commented that the budget is doable online and in the town clerk's office. And interested people can email the council with their comments regarding the budget. I think it's important to say that because with all of these executive orders, if one could assume that the council is just going to act without input. In fact, as I just said, the budget is available and the council is looking for public input via email. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Finance Committee? Okay, moving on to land use. Kevin?
Hi, this is Kevin Dombrowski, Councilor Dombrowski. Land use on Monday evening through the WebEx application. The only non-committee members that were in attendance were Nate Woody from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Liz Burdick, the Planning Director. Really, the only topic of discussion that came up is Nate Woody had made a suggestion of possibly using the farm road that is on the State Farm property as maybe a potential walking trail. So him and Liz Burdick were going to work together to put together a proposal to see if that's something that the council may be interested in pursuing. The only other action we did was started looking at the list of town-owned properties to update that. Since the last, excuse me, the last time it had been updated was in 2017. And that is my report.
Are there any questions for land use?
Mary McGrattan, Kevin, I didn't hear the trail or the name of the property that you were just discussing.
It's a State Farm property on what, the 1087 Colonel Leger Highway?
Oh, okay.
That there was, Nate Woody had walked the property recently and he noted that the, what is the farm road that goes around the perimeter of the property is a pretty easy and nice possible potential trail for citizens to use as a walking trail in town.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other liaison reports? Wow. Okay, Mayor, your turn.
So, sorry, I have the Board of Ed report.
Whoops, go ahead.
Councilor Ingalls, Board of Ed report. The board voted to eliminate spring break because of students being home. This Friday, April tenth, they already had off for Good Friday. Now they also have Thursday and Monday off. The last day of school is now June nineteenth. There is no tentative return date yet. The board is waiting to follow governor's orders. And that's it for BOE.
Any questions? Okay, now Mayor.
All right, so Mayor Fred Allen III here. Just wanted to give you an update on a number of things, ninety percent of which relate to the COVID virus. But I'll start with the library staff. You're probably aware I laid off five full-timers at the library. That leaves four. We have two left at each facility. None of the staff is rotating at this point, so the two stay in place. We also laid off the Assistant Tax Assessor. The Assistant Tax Collector, we actually let her go. She was in her probationary period and for various reasons, we decided to make that move. And we also laid off the Parks and Rec Assistant. So as I probably mentioned last meeting, it's never an easy thing to do, but you make chess game moves to try to preserve what we can in terms of funding and thinking about all fifteen thousand people in the town. So also Executive Order seven S, as in Sam, that's the one that requires the town to adopt one or both policies for the taxes, either a tax deferment plan low-interest tax plan, which is a three percent interest rate, annual interest rate, but it's only for ninety days. The assessor or the tax collector, I'm sorry, did give her recommendation today, which was she recommends the deferral plan. That's the plan that the Tax Collectors Association kind of looked at and felt like it was more manageable. So that is a ninety-day deferral. So the, you know, if you go forward from the July one date, people have ninety days without interest to pay. So it gives an additional grace period. And twenty to twenty-five percent of our taxpayers will receive a benefit from that because anybody that has a mortgage likely has the taxes escrowed and there is no relief for lenders or mortgage servicing companies for tax payments. So they're still going to pay. We have to get that resolution, I have to get that resolution to state OPM on the twenty-fourth. So at the next meeting, the next council meeting after it goes to finance, that needs to, one of the two needs to get approved. Sent a letter to the governor regarding the New York and New Jersey temporary relocations. There have been a number of them that have been popping up and residents have been very wary of it. So people have been communicating with the office to say, you know, these cars from New York or these cars from New Jersey or Pennsylvania are here, and people are concerned. So Executive Order seven T actually requires that short-term rentals be left available only for healthcare professionals. And so one of them specifically over on Long Pond was cited for that. And the police did go to that house. I asked them to provide a copy of the executive order because you have to assume that the occupants that were from Pennsylvania were not aware of the governor's executive order. But when that happened, they understood and their departure is actually tomorrow. So that's something we're, you know, we're trying to enforce. All the executive orders are to be enforced by local authorities, police in particular. So it adds a little bit more to everybody's plate, but these are things we're trying to get done. All department heads and other key staff in town hall now have, all have a laptop for portability. So everybody is now capable of working remotely, the key people, that is. And we needed to have that ready because the pressure mounts on a weekly basis to not be working in the town hall. And I have always felt that the town hall is a very safe work environment, but it's, I can tell it's wearing on some people. And so we're making sure that they're ready, but we've also implemented a so-called telework policy to make sure that people are accountable so that when they're going home to work from home, we need to know that there is a level of productivity at home, understanding that they won't be as productive as they would be if they were in the office, but we can't have them be fairly unproductive either when they're working from home and getting paid. So that policy is being signed by everybody tomorrow, and then that will start on Monday. And there is still a number of people, myself included, that will still be going to town hall and will be working from the building, but there's going to be an equal number that will be working remotely. In terms of COVID-19 in town, we have four confirmed cases. We have a thirty-two-year-old, a forty-four-year-old, a fifty-six-year-old, and a seventy-nine-year-old. So clearly, it is not just older people. And I say this as being almost fifty, I don't consider forty-four to be old. So that's where we are with it. Thankfully, nobody has passed from it so far in town. But, you know, the effects obviously vary from individual to individual. We also, as part of this, implemented a partial spending freeze for the rest of this fiscal year. So we are at, at this point, it is essential only spending. So we're trying to absolutely minimize spending so that we can have some carryover. And that's something that the governor apparently is going to be looking at in an upcoming executive order, is allowing carryovers to be brought into the next fiscal year. And I suspect that's part of the planning for the understanding that the revenue stream for the state will also be down. So he's probably thinking if they allow the carryovers into the next fiscal year, it will lessen the pain when the municipality receives maybe a lower revenue stream from the state. So we've done that. We did, on another front, we did choose to keep parks open. There, again, there is mounting pressure on closing parks and open space. And I am very reluctant to do that. You know, when you look at something like Nathan Lester House, where you've got, you know, six hundred to a thousand acres of open space out there. You know, if people have an opportunity to go out and go hiking and everything, I don't generally feel like they're hiking tightly clustered. So I think it's a good outlet for people still. We did have to close the playscapes and the basketball courts were definitely a problem. I went to Colonel Leger Park on several occasions, found pickup basketball games of ten or more kids on multiple occasions. And we had the police go down there to break them up. And, you know, within a half an hour, they're all right back there doing it again. So we ended up closing those. We ended up basically putting wood over each of the basketball hoops to prevent them from being used. And that seems to be working so far, which is really good. You've probably seen some activity on the town green. The town green just got power raked and leveled the other day. So all the rocks and cobbles that were in there got culled out of that mess. And it has now been seeded and fertilized and aerated. And they're going to be slice seeding it, I believe, tomorrow. And with the weather that we're having, we're probably going to see some young grass growing on our town green pretty quickly. So it's making great progress up there. And the parking lot, down, the lower-level parking lot and continuing in the pole barn is the next area they're going to be working on. And let's see, the last thing that I have for you tonight is, oh, fun. We have an S and P ratings call coming up on May twelfth. That's for our next round of bonding. And I said to our bond counsel, do we really have to do this right now? I don't feel like this is a great time. And she confirmed that and she basically provided a graph that if you could, if you could take the world's craziest-looking roller coaster, that graph was how the market, the bond market, has been over the last month. But at the same time, she also provided me information that said, if we don't do the ratings call, our issuance costs are higher. We have fewer bidders, which means you take what you take. And the rates are also higher because the potential buyers of our bonds feel like we're hiding something if we don't do a ratings call. So we are going to do the ratings call. That'll be early May. And I will hope for the best on that. We'll be prepared as always, but I'll hope for the best. And that is for the next fifteen million dollars. And it is the second-to-last bonding that we will have to do for the school projects. And that brings up the tail end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we can all say we prefer to sit in our seat rather than your seat.
It's kind of a tough one right here.
Whoops. Can I ask that if you are just listening and not speaking, that you mute yourself? Because there's a lot of background noises. And I'm seeing a lot of people that look like they're speaking, but I think it's just their background noise that's showing up. So if you would do that, I think that would help. Let's see, any questions now for the mayor? Hearing none. We will move on to old business. We have no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? And hearing none there, I'll move on to Admin. Councilor Ingalls?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Councilor Ingalls. I make a motion to appoint Mr. John J. Crowley, U-1914 Center Groton Road, Ledyard, to the Cemetery Committee for a three-year term, ending April twenty-sixth, 2023, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Newton.
Is there a second?
Second, by Councilor Som.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Ingalls, seconded by Councilor Som. Any discussion?
Mr. Crowley is an attorney. He has done some pro bono work for the Cemetery Committee, working on historic properties. And so now he's put his name up to fill a vacancy on the committee.
Very good. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
I make a motion that we adopt a proposed protocols for remote meeting participation as contained in the draft dated April sixth, 2020.
Is there a second, please? I think Mayor, Miss, Councilor McGrattan seconded it. Yes, thank you.
So the protocols are really to make sure that during this temporary timeframe when we are forced to all remote meetings, that our protocol keeps us accessible, keeps us honest, if you will, to FOIA requirements. The public still needs to be able to view our meetings. They need to be recorded. Listeners need to understand who they're hearing from. And so these protocols just help us run tidy meetings while they are forced to be entirely remote.
But would you call this a tidy meeting? Yes, okay. Any other questions?
I can mute myself while I'm coughing. That's tidy.
Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Som?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Eight, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item is under Finance, Mr. Som.
Councilor Som moves to acknowledge an emergency appropriation in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and fifty cents for the purchase and installation of a state police radio bridge in accordance with the procedure policy for emergency expenditures and appropriations. With funding to come from the following. Seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars and twenty-five cents from account number two-one-zero-two-zero-one-zero-three-dash-five-seven-three-zero-zero dispatch capital new equipment. Seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars, twenty-five cents from account number two-one-zero-two-zero-seven-zero-one-dash-five-seven-three-zero-zero emergency management capital new equipment. In addition, upon receipt of FEMA funding, reimburse the accounts noted above accordingly.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. So...
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I'm alone.
Okay, thank you.
So this, under the state's, excuse me, executive order, one of the things they're trying to anticipate is that if we have substantial reductions in the number of emergency personnel throughout the state and the region, that we would, all of the emergency organizations would have to communicate via some platform, that being the state police platform, for mutual aid. In other words, the town of Ledgers might be relying on mutual aid from other towns for police coverage, for fire, and other emergencies. Therefore, we need a communications bridge to get on the state police radio system. This is something we have been planning to do anyway. And the cost is fifteen thousand dollars approximately. And we are hoping to be able to apply for and receive FEMA funding because this is directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'll ask the mayor, Councilor Ingalls, to cover anything I may have missed. And I'll ask the mayor or Counselor Ingalls to cover anything I may have missed, or said incorrectly.
So, so what this bridge will do, so Groton, Stonington, Norwich, and obviously the state police are all on the system, and the bridge will allow Leger, or, or should I say, those four different groups to actually communicate while working in Leger. So, if the COVID outbreak is a, a big enough issue that we are really down police or fire, we can bring in towns to our north, or towns to our south, to handle coverage as needed in town on a mutual aid basis.
Um, Mayor, is this, is this the item that's supposed to be an acknowledgement rather than a motion?
This, this is the acknowledgement, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, I, I don't even think it needs to be a motion to acknowledge so much as just acknowledging that this is in process.
That's correct. Okay. Um, so we don't really, well, we'll go ahead and vote on it, that makes sense. Any other questions? Roxanne, would you call the rolls, please?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dumbrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Uh, next item, Counselor Soms?
Counselor Soms moves, thank you. Counselor Soms moves to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding by and between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection and the town of Leger, as contained in the draft dated March 31, 2020.
Is there a second, please?
I'm alone, second.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Counselor Malone, second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is simply the agreement that we will have with the state police to provide mutual aid and receive mutual aid using this mobile radio network bridge.
Is there any other questions, or are there any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Dumb, Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dumbrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, and at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, well, after I thank everybody for their patience, and we're getting better at this, and that's a good thing.
I think, I think it was quite tidy.
It was pretty tidy.
It was tidy.
Still a lot of background noise, and then, of course, my cat had to make an appearance. I'm not sure how many people caught that before I grabbed her. But, so mine was the, I think last time we had the mayor's dog, so we'll have to see what we have next meeting.
I have a stink bug in my room.
Okay, we'll count that as well. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Counselor Dumbrowski, and make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll have a second.
Second.
This, this meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Take care.
Roxanne, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I, I'm going to ask you if you can do a...